Okay, Himaja, lovely to see you. Thanks for coming. And alphabetically, you're the victim. You get all three questions first. I hope that's okay.
It's totally fine with me.
I'm sorry?
It's totally fine.
I didn't include a "who am I" speech. Well, sneak it into your answers. Did I say that? I didn't do that. Do you want to give us a "who am I" speech? Or would you rather just answer the first three questions?
Yeah, I'd love to start off with a brief speech on who I am I and then dive into the questions.
Excellent, okay. Give us a "who am I." And Franny, you get the same. And I didn't give you a timeframe, but a couple of minutes would be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here. My name is Himaja Nagareti, and I am a proud first-generation Indian-American and candidate for Acton Select Board. I have called Acton home for 19 years, including having attended K through 12 grades here. And I'm currently a Master's of Science student in Environmental Health at Harvard. My journey in public service really began with volunteering at Household Goods right here in Acton. From there, I expanded my advocacy to those in marginalized communities by developing toxic substances reduction policies at the Massachusetts State Legislature. And this year, I've served vulnerable communities in our area by setting up a COVID-19 at-home testing program at the Brigham and Women's Hospital for people in our area. Everything I do is really grounded in the fundamental importance of building representation, inspired by my work on the Harvard Dean's Advisory Committee on Diversity and Inclusion and the United Nations Association of the USA National Council. Through these experiences, as well as others, having worked for USAID, the CDC, and the Massachusetts Executive Office for Energy and Environmental Affairs, I have had the opportunity to engage in collaborative decision-making, collecting and interpreting data, and implementing outreach programs to uplift and empower underrepresented voices. I care deeply about Acton, about my home. And I believe that the people who make up the highest governing body of our town should be more representative of our community's diversity. Around one-third of Acton residents are people of color, and nearly one-third are people below the age of 30. As a young woman of color, I am eager to bring a vital perspective to the Select Board. I'm running today to represent the richness of our community and to bring innovative, fiscally responsible, and positive forward solutions to our town. Acton matters to me, and I want to give back to this town. I envision a town where we can continue to preserve our Acton environment by conserving natural land and critical environmental areas to create sustainable green spaces and improve community garden efforts. I believe we can and should also do more to support seniors and people with disabilities by sustainably increasing affordable and mixed-use housing, increasing transportation access, and access to mental health and well-being services. To promote public health and well-being, which is a theme we can all appreciate at this point in the year, I believe Acton should explore allocating resources to increase the number of mental health counselors and social workers with diverse backgrounds. And I'll go into more details with the questions, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. First question. What skills and/or experiences do you have that helped you prepare for service on the Select Board? Couple of minutes for each question, please.
Thank you. One of my experiences that I haven't touched upon yet is my work with student government at Harvard. As the Vice President of the Harvard Graduate Council, I represent over 10,000 graduate students and help pass resolutions, work with the central admin and individual school governments, other student organizations, including the media, and organizing events to address a wide range of needs and concerns of our student constituents. In addition to overseeing the proper management of our funds, which is a budget of over tens of thousands of dollars. This experience has taught me best practices that will serve me well on the Select Board. For example, setting personal one-to-one meetings, as well as facilitating and leading focus group discussions with people in the community to build trust and strengthen relationships is fundamental to informing the decisions that we make and negotiating and prioritizing the goals that we establish. And this is something that I have also done here in Acton, making an active effort to reach out to underrepresented voices, to get a better sense of what really matters to this town. Coming from a family that never really felt that we had a say or place in this town throughout my nine years living here, and certainly not having someone in town government that looks like me, I have learned representation really does matter. And that's why I feel really passionate about this.
Thank you. Question two. In three to five years from now, what would you see as two specific accomplishments in Acton resulting from your leadership in the upcoming term?
Absolutely. If I were to pick two, as inspired by my environmental health background, the first thing would be to identify areas where we can strengthen groundwater protection zones with the recognition that planning and zoning are strong tools for protecting groundwater and other natural resources in this town. And this is imperative to protecting the health and well-being of all our residents. And for example, provides natural opportunities for partnerships with, for example, Housing for All, both at the statewide level and the chapter local level, to ensure that we provide sustainable, safe, inclusive, and affordable housing. And my second goal would be to improve youth engagement in municipal government by establishing a youth council or an advisory board that can report to the Select Board. I believe it is important that we recognize the importance and the weight of age diversity in best informing the decisions that we make in this town today and in the future. Ultimately, at the end of my term, I will have felt that I really succeeded when there are more young people and more people of color who run for the Select Board in the next election. And just to let everyone know, there is no age minimum or limit to serve, and there's no experience threshold. You are enough, and you are capable. And that's something I really want to make sure people know.
Thank you. And the third question. Service as a member of the Select Board will require you to frequently consider, form conclusions, and ultimately vote on a wide range of issues affecting town residents. What experiences have you had in the past that will inform the way you will represent the community?
Yeah. I can talk about my wide range of experiences serving in leadership and advisory roles in academia, in the workforce, and in my community as a concerned citizen. But I'd rather spend this time actually talking about my own personal experiences growing up in this town. I personally never felt truly represented and never saw young people like myself taking part in town government. I was never taught or encouraged to believe that my voice could matter. And this is difficult. Being an underrepresented voice is difficult. And it's really hard, and it dissuades so many of us from taking part in basic civil engagements like voting. Because if the people who are running don't speak about the issues that matter to you, and if they don't actively reach out to you because they believe your voice matters, you're not going to engage. Life is already hard enough as it is. My dad came to India, and my dad left India and came to America over 20 years ago with very little money in his pocket, no social security. As a child of rural farmers in India, water rights and conservation efforts were things he learned about as a means of survival back in India. And he continued to stay interested in it when he moved to Massachusetts. And two days ago, my father was asked for the first time in his life to take part in a conversation with the Commissioner from the Acton Water District to share his thoughts about water access in Acton. It took over 20 years for someone to pay attention to his voice. And I'll never forget the happiness I saw on his face. These experiences have made me more conscious about actively reaching out to marginalized people in Acton to inform how I set my priorities moving forward and make sure that I'm really representing the people of this town. For example, for people that are not familiar with town government, navigating the town website and accessing proper translation and interpretation services for town documents and policy notices has been a real struggle. We need to do a proper assessment to determine what the specific needs are of our town and how we can improve our services to be as inclusive and conducive to civic engagement as possible. Thank you so much for your time, and just thank you for the opportunity to be here. It truly means the world.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And you kept it right at the two-minute each. God bless you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So there will be some Q and A if we have questions after, but I'm going to move on to Franny now. Thank you so much, Himaja.
I have a new microphone, and I want to make sure you can hear me. Okay. Yep? Good.
Franny, I'm trying to find you so I can spotlight you.
I'm... Can't say where I am on you.
There we go.
Okay. Hello.
Hello.
So I will do the first introduction.
A couple of minutes of how wonderful you are, or whatever.
Hi, I wanted to thank the Acton Democratic Town Committee for inviting me and Himaja to speak. My name is Franny Osman, and I've lived in Acton since 1995. I've served on the Council on Aging, the Cemetery Commission, and the Transportation Advisory Committee and the Commission on Disabilities for many years. I'm right now the chair of those last two. I was a Select Board member in 2014 to 2017, and I want to serve again as a member of the Select Board. I've always felt like I would someday. A few weeks ago, no, a few months ago, I was attending one of the regional meetings I go to. I think it was one that was sponsored by our local 13-town planning region. And I was feeling very inspired by my colleagues, especially female colleagues that were Select Board members in many towns around me. And I was thinking, you know, I think it's time. I think I'm ready to run. And at the same time, it feels like a time that I, with my skills, can bring to the town that seems to be struggling right now with exploring our values and exploring our commitment to anti-racism work. And I sort of just felt inspired to step in and bring those skills through the Board. I have a lot of energy to devote to the job, and I have many experiences working, obviously, within the town. And I have a big heart, and I think that makes it easy for me to relate to people and work with people in different parts of town, not just within the town committees, but residents and business owners and people who come to Acton to use it in other ways, going to classes, using medical establishments. It comes naturally to me to listen to people who are hurting, or slighted, or harmed, or people who are angry. And I tend to have a lot of faith in people. And I feel that if somebody's experiencing some of this harm, I want to listen. And if I've played a role in that harm, I want to learn from it and move on in a better way. And I would like to see our whole town work that way. I grew up in Newton, Mass. I worked in biostatistics and lived in China for a year, teaching English to doctors and public health workers. So I've been very happy, actually, that our Chinese population has grown so much. I get a chance to practice my Chinese and feel at home. I feel very at home visiting Chinese friends. It's a familiar culture that I really enjoy. And I came to Acton to live and build a co-housing neighborhood, which is designed in a way that we don't want people to just drive into their houses and disappear. We want to cross each other's paths, participate in common activities in our common house, and work together. And I've been really grateful how involved people have been in the outer world and as well as contributing to our own neighborhood. So do you want to ask me the questions?
Thank you, yes. I didn't want to stop you, but I have to stop you.
No, it's good.
Question one. What skills or experiences do you have that helped you prepare for service on the Select Board?
Well, serving on the Select Board is one very good experience. But I would say that my skills separate out into three different areas. One is as a convener of people. And I love to learn from people. I love asking people questions. And I could go all day, meeting a stranger and asking them a question, and listening to their answer, and asking them more about their background and their experiences. And after I convene a group, and I've been a part of forming a lot of groups, I'm able to sustain it by forming a team and delegating to other people if I can't continue in the same role as I did at the beginning. So I like to bring people together. Another skill is summing up data. That comes into play not only in my work, but in my hobbies, which are writing and drawing. When I write poetry, I have to do the same thing of trying to distill down. I studied biology undergrad, and then I studied public health because I wanted to bring people and science together. And later, after working in the pharmaceutical industry, I decided to get a degree in education. I was thinking I was going to become a teacher, and it was at Harvard Graduate School of Education in mid-career math and science. But quickly, I remembered that I don't like getting up early, and I realized I didn't want to be a teacher. But I noticed that I was taking all my electives in an area of summing up data. So I ended up focusing on program evaluation. And the third is leadership and group process through my community, through an organization called Women Outdoors that I've been on the Board or editor of the magazine for over 30 years, probably come close to 40 years. I have been in the town, in my community. I've done a lot with just organizing, following Robert's rules, or working by consensus. Just it's been a good education.
Thank you. And question two. In three to five years, what would you see as two specific accomplishments in Acton resulting from your leadership in the upcoming term?
I apologize. I could only break it down to three rather than two, so I decided to take a chance. One is that I want to help us get through the period we're in of intense learning. People of color know what the difficulties are of living in Acton as a person of color. People who are lower income or vulnerable in other ways know what their experiences are. And I want to make sure that we've incorporated all the values that we're now talking about. We're making sure that our committees have representation, which they do, a lot of them now. And our Board of Selectmen has in the past. Right this minute, we don't have racial diversity, but we have for many years. And I want to make sure that we really are represented by the diversity of our community in all ways, in race, ethnicity, age. I just think it's really important that people see themselves in town and have voices. So I want to see that we've made progress. I want to get away from this period of now, which is a period of deep learning, I think, for the community. And I hope we come out of it peacefully and supportive. The second is bikes and pedestrians. I want us, in three to five years, I would hope that we have a safer community, slower traffic, more sidewalks even. We've done a great job. More bike connections. I founded a group called Neshoba Regional Greenways, which is... I keep looking at you, Ellen, but I'm realizing I should be looking at that camera. So I apologize to everybody else except Ellen's little face there, that I'm probably looking like I'm looking down. Then Neshoba Regional Greenways is trying to make connections between paths and between towns. And recently, we took a walk through Concord and Acton trying to make that connection. And the third is a more vibrant business community. I think it's really important to help the tax burden, which it's crept up to 90% of our taxes being paid by residents. And if we can bring more businesses in, even with them still paying the same rate, it would take some of that burden off the residents, and it would make it a place that the young people who have come here, unfortunately during a pandemic, but fortunately for the whole town, we have a lot more younger people living here, would enjoy living here more. And the older people that we want to keep in town would be able to live here more with that vibrant business community. So that's the other change I would like to see.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Three, number three. Service as a member of the Select Board will require you frequently to consider, form conclusions, and ultimately vote on a wide range of issues affecting all town residents. What experiences have you had in the past that will inform the way you will represent the community?
Wow. I mean, there's just so much that's shaped my life. I grew up with parents who put a big value on justice. And they always told us about where we came from. My mother was always welcoming people from other cultures to live with us and helped some relatives immigrate from the Soviet Union. And my mother would volunteer to help newly settled immigrants. She was a language teacher, first Russian, and then the Russian program died at Brookline High School. She taught German and then English as a second language. And she really knew what it was to have recently arrived. And I would hear about our family, my cousins in Russia. I actually got to visit them when I was 10 and then again when I was 28. There were these two boys who had lost their parents when they were eight and 10 to Stalin. And I would always hear the stories. I was haunted as a child about the situation that my relatives there were living in. And so to see now some of these relatives immigrate and other people, I really had a sense of what it takes to newly arrive. And my relatives were involved in unions. And like all families, we've had our share of physical and mental illness. And I think just seeing how grateful I am for the resources I have to deal with those issues gives me a compassion and empathy for other people going through crises, which people always are in town, in our town. And I really feel for them, and I feel I can listen and help make our services better to be able to respond to them as best we can so everybody can live a quality life.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Franny. And thank you.
You're welcome. Actually, Ellen, I just noticed... I was also thinking about my experience recently. I helped form the Acton-Buxborough Diversity Coalition, which formed, moved into other groups. And now I'm a member of the Acton-Buxborough United Way Racial Justice Coalition. So that work has been very important to me. And the people I've met through that have been very meaningful to me. Anyway, so now I will... And thank you very much for having both me and Himaja, who I've really enjoyed getting to know over the last month or so.
And I thank you both. And I think we're blessed with two talented, talented and caring candidates. So this is really wonderful to meet you both. I don't know how to organize a Q and A because I'm not good with the chat. So if there's anyone who wishes to ask a question, we can spend another three or four minutes on Q and A if somebody is dying to ask one of these wonderful women a question. Help me, Bob. I'm not sure how to do it.
Well, okay. I think are people still in spotlight view? You can go back to gallery view if we want to see everybody. Yeah. Well, why don't people try to raise their hands if they have a question? And I see Greg Jarboe, one of our 20-year members, raising his hand. Former selectman, by the way. Greg?
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, I got elected to the Selectmen 40 years ago. So I'm not even sure if former selectman counts. It's sort of like, you know, old man in the sea. But I ran because of the WR Grace groundwater contamination. And I had studied on 1-1 diclorethylene. And boy, I knew my platform. And then I got elected. And one of the first issues that came before the Board was a dog issue. And two neighbors were complaining over the dog. And I suddenly discovered that the Board of Selectmen has the power to put dogs down. And I had never, ever, ever faced a question on the death penalty for puppies. And Fido was like, you know, they didn't prepare me for this when I was a candidate. So I would like to ask both candidates. If you've got two neighbors, and one has a dog and the other doesn't, and one of the neighbors comes before the Board of Selectmen and says, you know, you've got to put this dog down, how would you approach that issue? Death penalty for dogs?
I could go first because I had to experience that too, Greg. I also was surprised by those things, the alcohol hearings, the trees being threatened, and the dog issues. And they're very, very painful. I was very grateful, as in all of the issues that we dealt with on the Board, I was always very grateful for the staff. We have such an amazing town staff. And I have to say that that's one of the reasons I want to run again. I really love working with them. So it's very helpful to have a dog officer and the police department to help advise on those really hard issues. But I definitely had to turn. We had to be creative. You know, we had, at one point, you know, a dog that had killed another dog. And so we had to be creative and require a certain amount of protection so that he had double gated prevention from getting out of his house. And we tried everything we could do to not have to put down a dog. I don't think we had to put down a dog in the several hearings I went to, but it was always a question of what can you... That balance between someone's right to be safe and someone's right to enjoy their dog. So I'm with you on that being one of the hard things.
Thank you, Himaja.
Yeah. That's a very good question. And I think that one of my things that I hope to bring is this new perspective and really seeing how we're thinking about these issues and ways we can creatively think about these issues that we can creatively come up with solutions that hopefully, to the best degree possible, benefit both parties. And so in this case, I'd probably ask a few follow-up questions in terms of, is it possible to rehabilitate the dog? You know, how much of a danger does this dog pose? Like Franny said, is there any way that we can increase security to make sure that this dog is well sheltered and still able to stay with its family? And I think that these are questions that need to be asked. And that's one of the things that I really hope to bring is a more critical and interesting and creative and innovative perspective into whatever we do so that we do have these unique perspectives and we can think more deeply about these issues and how we can move forward with solving them. Because it may seem to us like a small issue, but to the owners, it's a huge issue. It's a member of their family in many circumstances and in many ways. And so being empathetic is also a really critical part of that as well.
Thank you. And thank you, Greg. Any follow-up on that, Greg? Or can we... You're good.
Not on that question. I have other questions, but I figure other people do too.
Hold the phone. Let me see if somebody else does.
Any hands raised there? I don't see any hands raised, so maybe you can give it back to Greg?
You've got another one. Go ahead.
Wow. Well, I... Oh, jeez. Okay, I don't mean to monopolize it. All right. The strangest event I ever encountered as a selectman was getting called at midnight by the fire chief, being told that there was a styrene leak at WR Grace Plant in South Acton and that within minutes, most of South Acton and a good chunk of West Concord could be a hole in the ground in the ground, because the chemicals were incredibly volatile. And so at midnight, as the chair of the board, I had to order the evacuation of a good chunk of the town. So, you know, this is, I guess, a variation on the 3:00 AM in the morning call that is often asked in presidential campaigns. But what is the biggest crisis that you've had to deal with? And are you cool under fire?
Ladies? Himaja?
You can go first if you want, Himaja.
Sounds good. Um, that, yes, absolutely. I think that when you're on the select board, and you have to deal with these issues, especially, like you said, environmental health ones, and ones that directly affect the well-being of people in this town, you have to be on call, regardless of what the situation is. You have to be on call. And for me, if I think about it, probably the biggest concern and the biggest emergency that I've had to deal with personally was through my work at the Brigham and Women's Hospital. So when COVID was first starting out, and the outbreak was going on, people, and me, myself, and my family, were really concerned. We had no idea what was going on. We didn't know how to get tested. The science was still developing on COVID-19. And with me being a full-time student, I had to take out 40 hours per week out of my day to answer hundreds of emails and calls. I was on call well into the night and well into the early mornings, talking with people, making sure that our staff was well, was well-handled, and was given the resources that they needed to do their job in order to reach out to people. And that was a really difficult two, three weeks. That was two to three weeks on call. At the end, we had made over 400 calls and messages and texts, and we'd reached out to people. And we were able to, in our own capacity, as a support staff for the infectious disease unit at the Brigham and Women's Hospital, we were able to make an impact. We were able to talk with so many people. And for every single person we talked to, just to give them the reassurance that we were going to send a test kit their way, that they didn't have to go outside to get tested, if they had symptoms, they could reach out to our clinical staff, just to give them that validation and that support that they needed when they really needed it, was something that was, that was really meaningful, and really taught me the importance of serving in these public capacities, the importance of being on call and being there. Because at the end of the day, we're voted by the people, and we serve the people in everything that we do. So that is something that I well recognize, that is something that I embrace as part of this job, and something that I hope to provide to the residents of Acton.
Thank you. Franny?
I hope I never have to deal with a large thing, but you never know when it comes along, especially in this climate environment. We're likely to have more storms and more periods of drought or flooding, or other issues that come up. And we're, we are working, and I've been involved with a lot of work in the subregion I talked about of our planning region called Magic, in trying to mitigate and respond to some of these issues. When I was on the select board, we didn't have any major immediate things. I kept asking myself at the beginning of the pandemic, wow, you know, what would I be doing? And I did, you know, if I was on the board at that time. I did, through helping Dan Sina with telephone calls, I was inspired by Tammy Guevaia's office, making calls to people. And I got the voter list and called, organized a bunch of people to make calls to people in Dan's region. And it felt very important to me, and I was really happy to see that there were other ways of reaching out that were going on through public safety and through the senior center. And I think it's really important to try to use those reverse 911 or some kind of registry. What I've learned from being on the, for the Commission on Disabilities is that we don't have a list of people who are, might be less mobile or stuck at home. And I think the pandemic has really helped us. In some ways, it's comforted me, it's in a strange way, that I saw us rise to the occasion. I saw the town do an amazing job at offering services, at bending rules of enforcement of some of the zoning bylaws, other ways that we were flexible, and that the town staff just really came through. And various organizations, the Acton-Buxborough United Way, and the Neighbor Brigade, all sorts of volunteer groups, came through and really helped people in that time. So I have confidence that if we have a big problem, and I hope we don't, when I helped find that trail recently through the WR Grace property, the person that was there from representing WR Grace assured us that that section north of the tracks was clean. We saw the areas that had been, and, and people were talking about that styrene event. So hopefully, we won't have that. But whatever we have that comes through, I believe that we will be able to handle it. And I am, I tend to be cool on my feet. I tend to be the person that sort of says, okay, what are we going to do, other than freaking out?
Thank you. Thank you both. We have four more things on the agenda, but if someone has one more burning question, I guess we can wiggle it in. Can I move on? Can I thank these wonderful women for
Jane has a question.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I wish both of you could be on the select board. I am so impressed with both of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I wish we both could too. And I'm hoping that we can. I'm hoping that, you know, whichever one of us comes, you know, there's always other elections, and that would be wonderful. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you both very, very much. This has just been lovely. I feel we're in good hands. Thank you.